Good afternoon, we're going to reconvene. Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Council President Clark and members of City Council. I am Trevor Day, Commissioner of the Procurement Department. I'm here to present for your consideration the Procurement Department's Fiscal Year 2017 Budget Request. With me today is Deputy Commissioner Nicholas Suzy and Director of Public Works and Special Services Jessica DeJesus. The Department is requesting a total appropriation for all funds of $4,951,818, of which $4,869,720 is in the General Fund. The proposed FY '17 General Fund allocation represents an increase of $32,048 over the FY '16 estimated obligations, which is a result of scheduled raises as agreed to in the last contract agreement for District Council 47. $2,194,662, which amounts to 45 percent of the total General Fund budget request, represents citywide charter-mandated advertising expenses. As many of you are aware, the Procurement Department is only involved with facilitating less than half of the city's total contract awards. Somewhere between 50 to 60 percent are professional services contracts, managed and released by each operating department. The Procurement Department continues to strategically improve the way it conducts business and streamline its operations relative to concessions, public works, commodities, and maintenance/repair contracts. We continue to achieve a high level of awards to local businesses with 68 percent of Procurement's total contract dollars awarded in calendar year 2015 to registered local businesses, an increase of 15 percent over calendar year 2014. The Procurement Department continues to foster contracting opportunities for OEO-certified vendors. Our Department has engaged various stakeholders, including vendors, professional organizations, and fellow city agencies in an effort to improve our initiatives to encourage increased participation. Since January of 2016, we have conducted and participated in eight vendor outreach initiatives that have attracted several hundred businesses on how to do business with the city. On the city's public works contracts, minority and women-owned business participation was 25 percent in fiscal year 2015, while services, supplies, and equipment was 28 percent. Fiscal year 2016, our participation has increased to 44 percent and 36 percent respectively. The Department, in coordination with the Chief Administrator's Office, has created three working groups, two for public works and one for commodities/services. These groups will create and implement actionable items to improve our contracting efforts. The creation of a procurement manual and a contract plan will create more transparency and guidance on how and what the city intends to contract. The implementation of a front-end e-procurement system will lower the barriers many businesses face in responding to procurement bids. Reverse auctions will ensure that the city is fiscally responsible with the funds entrusted to us by the citizens of Philadelphia. Improvements such as these will enable procurement to implement best practices where businesses can more readily respond to opportunities put out by the city of Philadelphia. With regard to the Procurement Department staff, we still maintain a few retirement-eligible employees. The Department as a whole, however, has successfully hired and trained 75 percent of its entire staff over the last five years as a result of retirement employee turnover. As noted in our written testimony, the Procurement Department boasts a diverse staff with 59 percent being black/African-American, 39 percent Caucasian, and 2 percent Hispanic. Overall, 68 percent are women and 32 percent are men. In fiscal year '15, the Services, Supplies, and Equipment Division issued 139 bids resulting in 169 contract awards totaling over $45 million. Also in fiscal year '15, 925 small order purchases under $32,000 were processed totaling over $6.3 million. Currently, there are 45 active cooperative contracts with estimated contract value of approximately $60 million and estimated cost savings of over $3 million annually. The Public Works Division awarded 131 contracts worth $290 million. Public Works also solicited three concession opportunities that resulted in one contract. Additionally, in FY '15, the Special Services Unit collected almost $505,000 in revenue from sale or scrap of obsolete, unserviceable property. Mr. President, this concludes my testimony. Should any council member wish to engage in further discussion in any of these matters, my staff and I are happy to answer any questions you may have or meet with the council members at your convenience.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony. I want to ask you a question. In the part of your testimony when it references economic policy or the value in the sustainable procurement policies and procedures, do you believe your Department could serve a purpose of enhancing economic development, policy, or growth in the city of Philadelphia?
Could we enhance economic development policy? I think by the nature of issuing contracts and awarding contracts locally, we are engaging in economic development policies.
When you make those determinations, to what degree? Because you know, we're Philadelphians, right? We really don't like people other than Philadelphians. But I know there's certain laws governing our procurement practices. From your perspective, how far do you think you can go? Excuse me, in our Philly First provisions, you know, we have a bill teed up. We didn't have the public hearing yet. This is another iteration of the earlier Philly First Bill we did some years ago. I think it started with Councilman Green, then Councilman Good did some amendments. How far do you think we can go before we get challenged by the law?
I mean, I think you're asking...
Let me ask you a legal question.
Right, a good question. I mean, I don't know the answers to those questions, how far we can go. You know, I would say that, you know, we currently award 68 percent of our total contract awards last year to local businesses. You know, we do a good job in employing and awarding contracts to local businesses.
All right. You know, Philadelphians, we want it all. With respects to, and you reference your, I think we're going kind of fast. With respects to the demographics associated with the contracts awarded, you were throwing out numbers. Could you not necessarily talk about percentages? Could you talk about the dollar figure for the various categories? Because sometimes, like, I just got some information this morning. It talked about a number of awards under a certain, like, $100,000. It was a significant number, higher than the other ones. But sometimes, the amount, the number of awards doesn't necessarily reflect the aggregate amount of the awards.
Sure. Yeah. That's, that's, yeah, the LBE stuff. Yeah, I mean, not LBE, MBE. That's MBE. Yeah. Yeah. So, for, we can talk about, you know, a couple of different, you know, we have two different areas, public works and services and equipment. So, for public works, I mean, do you want the dollar value or do you want the percentage of contracts? You're looking at dollar value?
I'm looking at dollar. Because sometimes, numbers, percentages don't necessarily reflect the real value of the actual contract.
Sure. So, in fiscal year '15, 25 percent of the dollar value was awarded to minority or women-owned businesses. And fiscal year '15, that, I mean, '16, that's 44 percent of the dollar value.
Forty-four?
Yes.
Fifteen-six, so a much better job.
Yes.
All right, okay. It's good to see we're ticking up.
Yeah.
Okay. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President, and good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Welcome. I want to start with page one of your testimony, initiative number three. Something made me pretty excited. I am a firm believer in having a one-stop shop for information versus having a little bit here and a little bit there. And we expect the public to sort of comb through, you know, all of our programs and all of the opportunities. And you can go a little haywire trying to do that. And you, so you referenced distributing a procurement guide. It's an essential playbook, right? To be able to have something essential that we can give to those who are interested in doing business with the city, particularly with the guise of increasing minority women-owned businesses in the city of Philadelphia. Tell me, one, when do you think the guide is going to be ready? Have you incorporated sort of any kind of vendor feedback into the guide? How was the concept sort of developed?
Sure. Yeah, so I think you're absolutely correct in all of those facets. So, you know, the city of Philadelphia, as you know, sort of witnessed this morning, there's a lot of discussion around contracting. And now that the contracting, all contracting reports up to Rebecca Reinhardt as the Chief Administrative Officer, I think there's an effort to consolidate and explain exactly the policy right now in a manual and, you know, sort of the intentions, the improvements moving forward. So, our goal is having a, is implementing the e-procurement system within six to nine months. And once we have that system implemented, coming out with a procurement manual. We'll be creating that during that process, but probably after that e-procurement system is implemented. So, after nine months, you know, probably January to March of 2017.
Great, that's January. Okay, so, one, thank you for that information. So, we'll get the e-procurement set up first, then the actual guide. I just ask, as you sort of lay out or develop your marketing plan, that aside from the businesses that will contact procurement directly, make sure you include council members as a part of that. We have town hall meetings, you know, often. We're out in the community where people are asking us, you know, quite often, "How do I get an opportunity to do business with the city of Philadelphia?" So, use us as a part of your marketing plan.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Chair recognizes Councilman Don.
Thank you, Council President, and good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Just a question for you on the reversed auction process.
Yes.
This is where, I guess, you have sellers compete against each other in bidding the price down.
Yes.
And so, when do you think that will be implemented?
So, we received three proposals in April. We're reviewing those proposals right now. And we expect to be under contract with the selected vendor in the next, you know, month or two months, however long the contract process takes. We're looking to implement it come July 1st.
So, by July 1st, we'll have this in place?
Yes, we're looking, that's our goal, and that's our plan.
And so, you'll keep us informed of the savings that might occur?
Yes. And to add, you know, we're looking at this as, not an approach on every contract, you know, we need contracts where we already have competition. It doesn't work if there's one or two vendors competing against one another. You know, we're looking for, you know, commodities that already have existing competition and rolling it out in that fashion.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman. Got a question, not related to your testimony or your budget. So, some representatives from the Controller's Office, I don't know if they formally presented this proposal of purchasing, that's a term. They were actually looking at the universities, if they were to purchase locally. You familiar with it all? And it was actually a significant dollar figure, and they were trying to create incentives. So, State Friends University penned, it obviously buys a whole lot of paper and all the other things, that if they were able to purchase locally, how much more revenue the city would bring in as a result of, you know, sales tax and all the other associated wages and everything. Have they ever approached you?
They have not approached me. But if you have, you know, names or contacts of people, I would be more than willing...
Maybe their relationship with the, they came to me in a past administration, so there is unlikely that they would have approached the administration.
I do know that there is a coalition with universities looking at purchasing. And, you know, Rebecca and I have talked minimally about that, but we would definitely, you know, talk with you.
Yeah, I mean, it was, you know, they were talking about certain incentives to, you know, get those people to do that. I mean, it's clearly, those universities spend a lot of money.
Yes.
And other institutions. Okay, I'm gonna make sure that they reach out to you.
Okay.
Advertisement, one of my favorite topics. So, your department, I believe, is still responsible for soliciting advertisement contracts for...
For advertising required or charter-mandated or state-mandated advertisements.
No, not you guys, not us from advertising. I'm talking about, I'd say, because it was a moving ball last administration. I was trying to figure out, because you know, we had this big proposal, municipal marketing and a whole nine yards, and they kept moving the ball on me, so I couldn't figure out where it was, who was responsible. Are you responsible for that? Because we just recently, I think we're in the process of concluding something for the MSB, RAPS.
Nicholas Suzy, Deputy Commissioner, Procurement. So, the last, there was a concession contract for municipal advertising, I think that's what, yeah. The last that was left was with the Managing Director's Office, but of course, the Managing Director's Office has changed a bit. So, I think we need to probably regroup and find out where the initiative is in terms of operation and a final working agreement with the contractor who was awarded.
All right, so we're not...
I believe, my recollection is that there was some sort of state, there was a change in state legislation surrounding advertising. So, I think the last that I had heard was we were waiting for that implementation of that change before the city was moving forward with the contract.
No, it's actually changed, it's been implemented. The issue is, there's possibly, and they say possibly because all those will be open for review, limitations on advertisement on a public thoroughfare, particularly state highways. And then, regardless of those limitations, the authorization process had to ultimately go through the state. And that was this change in the state regulation, PENDOT. But the first level of review as it relates to zoning or any other regulatory matters went through the city of Philadelphia initially. And then, that applicant would have, which I think is stupid, frankly speaking. You should be wondering, I don't know what they have in another level of redundancy. But then, it had to go to the state for authorization. But it was indicated that the city's review process would essentially be accepted at the state level. But we don't know where we are.
So, as Nick had indicated, I mean, this is a, it's an MDO-managed contract.
Okay.
So, procurement did put out the opportunity. We awarded the opportunity, and it's now being managed by the Managing Director's Office.
All right. You say it definitely is, or you think...
To my knowledge, that is the case, yeah.
Okay. Ms., where's Anna? Is that your understanding? Okay, I just want to make sure, I know, you got these hierarchies. We only have, we only have a couple of people working at City Council, so we don't have a lot of levels of government. Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. Mr. Day, I wanted to follow up on some questions, actually some responses from Rebecca Reinhardt earlier regarding diversity. And also, and she provides information regarding diversity and also retention. Wanted to get your perspective in reference to diversity, not only in contracting per se, but also from a workforce perspective, especially from a retention perspective. I know that Ms. Reinhardt spoke on a personal perspective and also on behalf of administration of the goal of make sure we have a diverse workforce, but also diversity also comes from a retention perspective. So, I'm curious about what's your perspective on retention of a diverse workforce within your department?
Sure. So, I think, you know, retention of employees is always a good thing. Jessica is actually a good example of somebody who started with procurement and has succeeded and risen through the ranks and is now a Director of Public Works and Special Services. So, we definitely support retention and diversity within our workforce. You know, if you look at our testimony, we have a diverse workforce. And we have two positions available in our executive team. We made an offer, and that person accepted the offer, that is a woman, a minority woman. So, you know, as of today, you know, we have a diverse workforce.
He said two positions recently came open in your office?
Two positions recently came open in my office?
No, I mean, he said you had two openings, and I was like...
Two executive team openings, yes.
Right, and that happened based on people decide to go, other opportunities? How did that transition between one administration to another? When did those openings become available?
One person took another job opportunity, and so she left on her own accord. And the other person was a result of the transition.
Okay. And that happened in the beginning of this administration?
Yes.
Okay. Wanted to also ask some questions about contracts. And one of the questions that have come up through a number of different hearings is that for local and businesses of color not able to participate as much because of the size of the contract. I believe I've done the understanding that the administration is trying to, at least in the rebuild initiative, have smaller contracts. Is that, are you also taking the same perspective as administration to unbundle some of our larger contracts? And if so, is there a list of unbundled contracts?
So, yes, we are looking at all of, you know, as part of the working groups that I'd mentioned during the oral testimony, we are looking at the commodities that we're putting out. We're looking at what we're putting out, how we're putting it out. We're looking at the OEO registry and sort of overlaying what we're putting out for contracts, the OEO registry and participation that we can seek. We're working collaboratively with Angela Doud Burton in sort of analyzing as opposed to just not having a plan and continuing to cycle through contracts without having a plan or an approach. You know, currently, 44 percent of our contracts are under $100,000. So, there's a little bit of a disconnect when we say that there aren't opportunities out there for small businesses. There are opportunities out there for small businesses. I think we need to do a better job of marketing those opportunities, and we've talked about that in the past.
So, when you say you're going to do a better job of marketing, and I think we talked about this both in my office and also in the earlier budget hearings, of getting the word out. And we talked about doing some new ideas and new concepts. And some of the conversations I've heard is, you know, the workshops and other type of initiatives done in the past. But what additional steps would you plan on taking in being more proactive and getting the word out?
So, I think we have been more proactive. Since January, we've engaged in eight vendor outreach initiatives, so, which is, you know, two times every month. Is that enough? No. I think we need to, you know, increase that and look at, you know, how we're strategically approaching local businesses, minority and women-owned businesses, and increasing that. I mean, part of this is also related to OEO and OEO's registry. You know, can we be more strategic about looking at our existing portfolio of contracts? Are there vendors that we have under contract that are women-owned or minority-owned contracts? Are we underreporting the contracts that we actually have? So, these are all, you know, things that we're going to be looking at.
So, in reference to being proactive, which you say you believe you're being proactive, have you reached out to other entities, either in the private sector or other public sector entities, maybe city-related or other jurisdictions that have programs that are doing a better job of getting the information out and trying to see what they do and either work with them or model some of the programs that they're doing?
Yes. So, we've been in conversations with Blue Cross, Blue Shield, and also SEPTA. I mean, SEPTA does a pretty good job of, you know, sort of diversity in contracting. You know, and I think in fiscal year 2016, as I said in my oral testimony, you know, we currently have, what was it? 44 percent of our public works contracts were awarded to women or minority-owned vendors, and 36 percent of our service, supplies, and equipment vendors, year-to-date for this fiscal year.
Can you give some perspective on your involvement in the rebuild program? There's been some back and forth in reference to how that is going to go through from a procurement perspective. What is your involvement in rebuild and that initiative?
So, I'm, of course, you know, 100 percent supportive of that initiative. You know, I think there's, the administration, the Managing Director's Office is currently looking at how they're going to be putting that out. And I think that is, you know, they have working groups, they have groups that procurement has been involved with and attended. You know, this is a decision that the administration is looking at, and, you know, I don't think that decision about how it's going to go out has been made. So, you know, we're joining in those conversations.
But isn't that traditionally an initiative, considering that is a city initiative that would go through procurement or with procurement's involvement?
A portion of that would. I mean, the design component would not go through procurement, no. It would be managed by public property, and then that would be designed. And then, the construction would be put out through procurement, yes.
But considering rebuild, for the most part, is a capital investment project, we're looking at parks, recreation centers, and libraries. That would be construction, so traditionally, that would go through your shop, correct?
As I said, the design for that would go through the professional services contracting, which is managed by public property.
But I'm talking about the construction side?
Yes, the construction side, as I said, would go through procurement.
Okay. I'll come back and some other questions.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
So, state for me, each of you, your full title and the position you hold, and give me your elevator speech of what you do.
Sure. So, I'm Trevor Day, the Procurement Commissioner, and I manage the Procurement Department both operationally, day-to-day operations, and the strategic initiatives that we're implementing moving forward.
And before that, you did what?
I was the Deputy Commissioner.
Okay. All right, then, trying to get a picture here, please.
Good afternoon. I'm Jessica DeJesus.
Talk, please speak into the mic.
Good afternoon. I'm Jessica DeJesus. I am the Director of Public Works and Special Services. And I oversee the public works contracts, advertising, disposal...
Advertising and...
And disposal.
Okay.
And inventory.
Thank you.
My name is Nicholas Suzy. I'm the Deputy Procurement Commissioner. I actually was until a couple weeks ago, the Director of Public Works and Special Services. And Jessica's worked with me for the past two years to oversee public works contracting as well as advertising inspections, asset recovery, a whole host of other things. And in my role as Deputy Procurement Commissioner, you know, getting involved in the staffing of the department and making sure that our folks are being heard when they have issues. My door is always open. I'm the HR liaison as well to our OHR folks. And just making sure the department's running, making sure we're getting contracts in place and supporting the Commissioner and my fellow colleagues.
Are you two exempt employees?
We all are.
You are?
Yes. Jessica was promoted from civil service, but we are in exempt positions.
Okay. All right. Commissioner, please give me your philosophy on diversity.
Sure. You know, I think diversity and inclusion is very important. You know, I think, you know, we have a team that is diverse within procurement as a whole and the executive team. I think having people from different backgrounds only elevates, you know, our decision-making and our process and our thinking. You know, and as I said earlier, you know, we made an offer to a woman for another executive team position. She's a woman of minority race. And, you know, I think, you know, I look for that in my executive team. I mean, I think previously, we've had an inclusive and diverse executive team, and I look to build that again.
How many persons report to you?
Directly to me? These two people.
Just the two?
Yes.
So, everyone else is civil service in your department?
That's correct.
Okay, very helpful to know. Following up on, Councilman Green must have seen my questions before I asked them, because he asked to know for the questions that I had. Have you all, to the issue of thinking outside of the box, working outside of the margins, looking for creative, non-traditional ways of getting to the MBE, WB, DBE world, have you ever participated in Med Week?
Yes, I personally have.
In what way?
I've attended several different activities. There's often a dinner. I've gone with Angela to those dinners. I've gone with Angela to those dinners, or Angela's staff to those dinners.
Have you ever presented a workshop, a forum?
To my knowledge, procurement has never presented a forum, but I am more than willing to do that and work with the administration or council or, and OEO on doing that.
Well, you can count that as of September 2016?
Great.
It will be a yes.
Great.
We do an effort with PIDC every year and at the naval shipyard, and you will be on the program this year.
Okay.
To speak to close to about 200 MBE, WBEs.
I would love to do that.
So, to Councilman Green's question again, what innovative, non-traditional activities have you engaged in? Are you familiar with Dela Clark and the Enterprise Center in West Philadelphia?
Yes.
Any work with them at all?
So, we recently had a vendor forum specifically around food. We had forty vendors come, forty or fifty vendors come to that event, which was held in procurement, but we reached out to Dela Clark's organization, and I would say, you know, a handful or more than a handful of people from that organization or associated with that organization came to that forum.
And what's the yield of the effort?
So, we were specifically looking at vending machines.
I see.
And, you know, putting out an opportunity around vending machines, but it was also in conjunction with the Health Department in looking at healthy food initiatives and how we can provide, you know, healthier alternatives out there in vending, and not necessarily traditional vending machines.
Yes.
But little, you know, pop-up marketplaces and things like that.
Very good. That sounds very innovative. As a follow-up to Councilman Green's question too around unbundling, you say we are working at it. What does that mean? And we've heard that throughout the budget hearings. We're working on it. There's a new task workforce. Are you on the workforce team or the work task team?
Yes, yes.
Okay. So, a year from now, we really want to hear tangible outcomes of what the work product looks like.
Absolutely.
So that we don't have to be redundant in asking these same questions next year.
Absolutely.
Is unbundling on that agenda?
It is.
Okay.
You know, again, you know, we're looking at all the commodities that we put out, and, you know, we're looking at areas that we can debundle and areas that we may bundle things together. I mean, so it's really taking a strategic look at what the city is putting out and really being, you know, having a strategy around those opportunities, because right now I don't think there's a strategy around those opportunities.
I see. So, you say also that forty-four percent of your contracts are under $100,000, and you indicate that you believe the department can do better. So, is there any interface with CDCs? I mean, you have ORP, for example, up in the Northwest, which has done an extraordinary job of rebuilding that community, and there are a number of CDCs of that caliber who would love to hear about contract opportunities under $100,000.
Great. I mean, we can definitely, you know, I mean, if there are CDCs in Philadelphia that, you know, you feel we should be reaching out to, we can do that. I mean, I can also look at, I think there's an association of CDCs.
Yes, it is.
And we can look at their membership and maybe reach out to them to do a better job. Absolutely.
I would urge that in addition to speaking with district council members, because there are a number who have active, engaged CDCs. I mean, Councilwoman Sanchez for sure, who were yearning for contracts under $100,000.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Dom.
Thank you, Council President. I want to follow up on the Council President's comments about the, I think the Controller's Office that did a study on procurement. I happen to have it in front of me. It's a benefit of having an iPad, I guess. But it's pretty powerful, and one of my questions, I may have missed this answer, but do you know of the procurement that Philadelphia did in the past year? What percentage was from Philadelphia businesses?
I know for the procurement department bids, yes. So, sixty-eight percent of our contract awards were awarded to local registered businesses.
Okay. So, the study the Controller did talks about the nonprofits and the volume of business that they do. And I'm just going to read a few quick things, just, I don't know if this is something in your department that you can convene a meeting or not.
We typically don't award to nonprofit organizations.
No, no. We're talking about the nonprofits in Philadelphia who are buying goods and services outside of the city.
Okay.
That's the report that was done.
Okay.
And the opportunity was like half a billion dollars that they felt we could recapture in the city. I guess my question is, is that something that in your area you could convene a meeting with the nonprofits and try to get this resolved, or is that out of your jurisdiction?
So, are we asking about?
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
I'm sorry. Are we asking about nonprofits in Philadelphia that have city contracts?
No. I'm going to read you this. The Controller's Office analyzed three billion of procurement data from five of Philadelphia's largest institutions and determined that approximately 800 million or 27% is spent with Philadelphia vendors, 27%. The institutions bought about 860 million in manufactured goods, of which 136 million was local, 15.8% local. The analysis suggests more than 530 million in total promising opportunity for increasing manufacturing output, and they go through the sectors. But the question, and he has a recommendation here to convene a meeting, and my question is, who's responsible to do that and get this organized?
Right. So, I would say that there, that sounds very intriguing. You know, I think there are some things that the city of Philadelphia needs to do to improve their contracting, and if we can get to a point where we fix those things and doing, in coordination, I think, with the Commerce Department, you know, engaging some of those local businesses and talking about that, you know, is something that sounds intriguing. But my focus right now is really to improve our processing and our communication on our contract opportunities. So, I can't commit to that. I find that very intriguing, but again, you know, maybe ask that same question next year, and we may be in a different, you know, sort of stance.
Offline, give me your email address. I'll send you this report.
Okay.
Because this is, there's valuable information here that we should, if the Controller's Office is doing this work, we should be using it not just for the nonprofits, but even in the city of Philadelphia.
Okay. All right.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman, and thank you for pulling that information up. Appreciate it. Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. Just wanted to follow up on a question, a couple questions that Councilman Brown raised. From your perspective, how do you see the role of procurement as it comes to or pertains to economic development in the city of Philadelphia?
I think that was the first question that was asked by Council President Clark. So, I think the fact that the city, the procurement department, the city of Philadelphia awards contracts, and we're awarding contract, and if we're awarding contracts to local businesses, we're engaging in economic development activities.
And you've been, and how long have you been with the procurement department?
I've been with the procurement department since 2011, says my staff.
Okay. Can you give me some perspective on the role procurement has taken in the past in reference to enforcement of issues as it pertains to diversity or OEO issues?
The perspective that we've taken in the past?
Right, past, right.
I mean, I don't know, you know, what you're referencing.
Or matters you've been involved in from an enforcement perspective. What I've heard from various businesses over the years that they're included on projects as part of an RFP, but then they may or may not be used going forward. Some entities may use that as a pattern or practice. The Controller's Office just testified early in a week regarding some of their involvement from an enforcement perspective, and I wanted to get your perspective since you've been with procurement since 2011, your involvement or perspective in that regard.
Sure. I mean, we rely upon the departments who are ordering off of the contracts to inform us of any contract requirements that are being broken, or requiring the vendor or the subcontractor to report to us. And really, the way that the contracts are managed, they're managed by each department for which the contract has been awarded. You know, I know OEO has some responsibility for compliance of minority and women participation. I believe they've done some, they've changed some of their practices and increased their efforts around compliance.
So, because of your, what I'm hearing from your statement, that's mostly on a department level, so you really haven't had that much involvement from an enforcement perspective regarding issues that may go up to either Controller's Office or Inspector General's Office?
So, I mean, enforcement could come in from a variety of levels. It can come in without the Inspector General's Office or without Controller's Office being involved. I mean, there's a whole, you know, sort of spectrum of issues that could come up on any contract, and some of them we deal with by bringing the vendors in, discussing. Some of them, we, the departments send them a letter, you know, asking them to cure the contract. Sometimes procurement sends them a cure letter. Sometimes procurement sends them a letter to threaten canceling the contract or debarring them. So, it could be, there's a whole spectrum of issues. I mean, I can't, you know, go through each individual alternative.
So, how many matters have you been involved in where you took the role or been involved in a role where procurement made a decision for disbarment?
A handful of.
Just give me a range or a number.
Five to 10.
And the five or 10 that procurement took the decision to recommend disbarment?
Anywhere from, you know, threatening debarment to debarring them, yes.
Okay. And so, how many were actually disbarred?
Since I've been at procurement, I think we've had three vendors that have been debarred.
Okay. And how many contracts do you let on an annual basis?
On an annual basis, probably about, you know, somewhere between 300 to 350 contracts annually, give or take.
And that's through procurement. What about through other departments, just on a macro from the city as a whole?
I don't know the answer to that question. I really don't.
And so, based on your earlier statement about being more proactive and getting information out to various entities about the opportunities, do you also see as your role at procurement to be more proactive in letting various contractors, subcontractors know to contact you when there's been issues of fraud or other type of malfeasance?
Absolutely. And some of those, you know, they're, some of them are referred to the IG's office, or some of them are referred to OEO, and some of them are handled by procurement. So, yes, absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gimm.
Hello, how are you? One of my questions has to do with the fact that many businesses feel so confused by the whole procurement process and often don't have a lot of clarity about why they did or did not win a particular bid and what the standards are for winning bids. Have we ever done a process where as we might unseal successful bids at the close of a project to help better inform folks and give some insight into what actually qualifies as a winning bid, what the parameters might have been, so that, you know, more people understand what the bidding process, what went into determining what created a winning bid?
Yes. So, I agree with you that there is, it's confusing. It's not very clear. There's, you know, two sets of contracts that the city puts out. We don't handle them the same, and so I think, you know, creating that clarity and creating a sense of where we can communicate and how we can communicate better on both sets of contracts, and then looking at changes that we can make to, you know, make it more transparent and make it more, make it easier to understand and better, and easier to know what the deficiencies were in their proposals. With procurement contracts, by the time, any vendor that does not win a bid can, you know, we publicly read people's proposals. So, A, if they attended the bid opening, they know right then and there who the apparent low bidder is. Now, we also do, we make a determination when we review the bids, and, you know, if the apparent low bidder did not submit something that's required for the bid, or, you know, add some sort of responsibility issue or responsive issue, we send them a notification, and we say, you're not, you were found not responsive, you're found not responsible. If they're found not responsible, they can appeal that. If they're not responsive, it's not appealable, but they're given notification of that determination. With, and then, once the contract is conformed, all of our records are public. You know, they, people call us all the time, constantly. People come in the office and ask for records. We have a customer service unit that I get compliments on. It's really the, it's really the only unit that, you know, in my department that I consistently get compliments on. And so, they will, they will help them, they will pull those records, they will review those records with them. You know, I think we do a pretty good job of doing that.
So, given the fact that so many people feel like the bidding process is still mysterious and slightly elusive for them, what suggestions would you have for local businesses to better understand that? I was trying to determine whether like a more reverse process would help bring some clarity to the situation, provide a set of standards, and be able to assist folks, but if that's not the best way, since you're already doing that really well, then what would you recommend as being another alternative?
Well, I mean, when I, when I'm talking, you know, we're talking about 40%, 40 to 50% of the city's contracts are put through procurement. So, there's another 50 to 60% of contracts, and I don't know, you know, how those are handled. They're handled individually by each department, so how they handle them, you know, is that, I think there is, there's no clarity around that, and there's no standardization around that. Or maybe there is, but it's not, you know, it's not communicated. So, I do think that we need to have a better.
Could you just, I'm new.
Yes.
Could you give some examples of types of contracts that might go, that would not go through procurement, like no-bid contracts or?
Sure, yes. So, anything that's considered, put out as an RFP, as a professional service, so anything from engineering services, architectural services, consulting services, you know, I don't know what else.
Medical services, DHS services.
Yeah.
I'm saying because the bulk, sorry, apologies. So, medical services, DHS services, it kind of runs the gamut of any type of professional service you might think of is going to be put out as an RFP. And so, we're seeing, we're doing mostly lowest responsive, responsible bidder, so that's the terminology we use a lot, and those are commodities-based contracts, very standard maintenance contracts, mostly things that can be very defined upfront are the types of contracts you would want to put through the sealed bid process. And things that are undefined, that a professional service would be needed for, that you can't maybe spec out all upfront, are normally better to be put through an RFP process. And that's, that's what, oh, and T. David's here from, who oversees that whole process for the city, so he can probably speak better to that than I can.
Hello.
Good afternoon, Councilwoman. My name is T. David Williams, Director of the Contracting Unit. In terms of professional services RFPs, we have a couple of ways to obtain a contract for professional services, but the majority of those contracts are obtained through RFPs, which according to Chapters 17, 1400 of the Philadelphia Code are required to be open and transparent. They are published, the RFPs are published on our website, E-Contract Philly. One of the absolute requirements of Chapter 17, 1400 is that we list the reasons that the winner won, and conversely, the losers lost. Not to really call them winners or losers, but the person who is awarded, that information is set out on the system. So, what happens is a department puts together an RFP, and my unit reviews those RFPs before they are published. We have 12 standard selection criteria that we use, although departments, because these are individualized services and qualitatively based, make their own determinations about what vendor they want to use. Cost is a component, but not always the ultimate component. At the end of the process, once the award closes electronically on E-Contract Philly, there's a period where the departments review the proposals that were submitted. They may call individuals in or companies in for interviews or presentations. Once that happens, then the department makes an award. An actual award goes out on E-Contract Philly to notify the public that the department intends to contract with this particular vendor, and that award, notice of award, also lists the reasons why. By code, that award has to stay up for at least eight days before the contract is conformed, and then the negotiation process begins. and then the negotiation process begins and the contract conformance process occurs. At any point in time, a vendor who is not awarded may ask what happened, why they were not awarded. As a matter of policy, I'm sorry, as a matter of chapter 17, 1400, that information is not public until the contract is conformed. And there's a policy reason for that. You do not want to have disruptions for city employees as they are trying to conduct the city business. They want to get the vendor that they've chosen out, and then the information is then public, and vendors can pull that information. They can make a request for that information. They can also request the department to meet with them and review with them not why the winner was selected so much, but why they were not selected. And I know that Ms. Dow Burton really encourages women and minority-owned businesses to seek her out if they have any questions as to why they were not selected.
So you're talking specifically about professional services contracts, right?
Yes, ma'am.
And so there are other categories of contracts that also exist, like services and supplies. Professional Services actually has a fairly decent opening for local and minority business contracts, but the areas which seem very closed and fixed are these other areas. Do they go through procurement, or do they go through RFPs?
So, services and supplies and equipment comes through procurement, yes. And, I mean, with regard to that specifically, I would say that's what we're looking at with our working group in improving our marketing around those opportunities. You know, we don't, we don't get a lot of competition on a lot of those opportunities. So I think, you know, part of what we've been doing over the last several months is really marketing the areas that we get limited competition and saying, "Listen, you know, if you're a local business, if you're a minority or women-owned business, if you apply for this opportunity, you may have a 30% chance of winning it," because we're only getting two other responses, which is, you know, it really opens some eyes. I mean, I think additionally, you know, we need to look at, you know, what are we asking vendors to agree to for those contracts? Because they are a sealed bid, they have to agree to our terms and conditions upfront, and a lot of vendors don't want to agree to our terms and conditions upfront.
I'll have more questions after the next round. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Okay. Follow-up with Councilwoman Green's question. Who is the enforcer when it comes to identifying those primes who are in violation and applying a fine or whatever the penalty remedy is? Who ultimately is the bottom-line enforcer?
So, I think the bottom-line enforcer is, if it's a procurement contract, is procurement because we can debar them or cancel the contract. However, you know, there's, you know, the operating department who's ordering the items, if they're not satisfied with the service of that vendor, or they don't feel like that vendor is fulfilling their contract requirements, you know, that's something that they need to communicate to procurement. So, and then additionally, you know, or, you know, if we have a subcontractor, they may go to OEO and communicate that to OEO. And then OEO will try to resolve that issue. If they can't resolve it, they'll involve procurement as well.
Okay. And I do know that OEO will try to revolve, resolve those kind of matters, because I actually had to seek the assistance of Angela Dow Burton in her office for primes, law firms, who were not paying their subs, who were women, and had a lot of paper games going back and forth, and it required OEO stepping in to just settle it. So I'm very much aware of their need for interference at those times. What does, so what do you, what does your department do to ensure that primes are promptly paying their subs? Any mechanisms or red flags in place, triggers that let you know that, what's in the system that lets you know that primes are not honoring up?
Right. I mean, the current structure right now is, at least for minority and women-owned businesses, you know, Angela, OEO has a compliance system where they're pulling all the payments of the city of Philadelphia.
I see.
And the primes are validating, you know, how much of that is going to a minority or woman-owned sub, and then those subs are going in and validating that or invalidating that. And that's currently the structure of how that gets handled.
So if a prime is habitually late in paying their sub, is this considered by the department for future contracts they may be up, where they may be up for consideration?
It could be, yes.
You say could be?
Yes.
Could be considered.
I haven't heard of that situation occurring, but it absolutely could impact our awards in the future.
And you provided some numbers to Councilwoman Green regarding the number of instances where the contracts were terminated.
Well, I mean, I would say, you know, threatened to be terminated or terminated, yes.
So what happens with a threat?
They cure the situation, so they resolve the situation.
Okay. I want to drill down a little with regards to professional contracts, and this is an anecdote that I've heard from a number of lawyers from the major law firms. Our government does a lot of big business with major law firms, and the city solicitor may be the more appropriate person to pose this question to. But what we learn is that the city, law firms get fat on the city of Philadelphia, and when those contracts go to those law firms, they never see the face of a minority lawyer in that law firm or a female lawyer in that law firm. So what can we do to drill down with those law firms that get great deals from the city, yet do not have an inkling to be thinking about women and minority lawyers?
So, I think either T. David or Angela is better situated to answer that question.
Good afternoon. My name is Angela Dow Burton. I'm Executive Director for the Office of Economic Opportunity. Councilwoman, I thank you for the question. One of the things that the Office of Economic Opportunity did a few years ago was to look at the contracts awarded by our law department and work with the law department to go to those law firms that we did business with and encourage those firms to put their business through minority or women partners. We find that many law firms operate as an umbrella organization where each of the partners are in effect an enterprise unto themselves, and they're building business, and they reap the rewards of bonuses, et cetera, based on the size of their business generated. And we want more minorities and women to be promoted, number one, within law firms and other professional firms like architecture and engineering into the role of partners.
That's contrary to the information that I've learned over the past many years. So what level of reach do we have as a city to say, "We're giving you this business." The law department, like all departments, have X number of goals, if you will. How far can we as a government go, you specifically in your role, or whoever the mayor would designate, to make it clear that, we know what the situation is with women, I mean, with women partners in law firms across the city?
Sure.
That's like trying to eat an elephant.
Right.
So recognizing we're not going to get there, many are not going to do that on their own, yet you still want work, business, opportunities from the city, what can we do as a city to say, partners aside, we want minority lawyers and women in your firms to have access to these city taxpayer dollars in this contract?
Well, one of the things that we've done is make sure, and we report it in our annual report, those law firms that have women and minorities who are in fact partners, who are not just partners, but the billable partner, the partner that's going to get credit for the business.
Okay.
And the financial bonuses associated with that business. So it's clearly documented in each of our annual reports.
Is clearly what?
Documented. We document the law firm along with the attorney, who is the partner getting the credit for the city's business. And it has been very productive working with the city solicitor's office. Shelley Smith and I, and attorneys within the law department, have moved jointly to enforce that kind of partnering with law firms over the last few years.
And so what are the trends?
So the trends are those firms that have minority or women firm partners are giving them the billable credit, and we're reporting it. Are we as effective as we'd like to be? No. We'll keep moving that rock. We're certainly in discussions right now with Nolan Atkinson to talk about how we roll this strategy out even farther with our alliance partners across the region, whether it's the anchor institutions like the universities and the medical institutions who do business with legal firms. How do we get more of that business to go to minorities and women within those organizations?
Did that bell ring?
Sorry?
Did the bell ring? It did? Okay. I can't remember.
Yes, Councilwoman.
Okay. All right, then. Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Toddler Burger.
Mr. President, thank you. In regards to procurement, I wanted to pursue looking into the matching bid process for Philadelphia-based companies. I was told that this type of bidding would lead to unbalanced bids, but doesn't reverse auctioning also lead to unbalanced bids, but without the added benefit of helping a Philadelphia-based company?
So, the question is, would, does reverse auctions result in unbalanced bids?
Yeah, and without helping Philadelphia-based companies. I think, you know, the opportunity for a Philadelphia-based company to, you know, take another look at this and have a chance at the opportunity, particularly within a certain percentage points, I think is helpful. I think, as, in many ways, we're a company too, and we should be doing business, I mean, this comes from my Chamber of Commerce background, it is best to do business with those who do business with you. And so helping Philadelphia-based companies, the very populations that live here, creating jobs, is important to me. And if we go to, you know, that process, which, you know, is the opportunity to match that, I was told by your office that that would lead to unbalanced bids. But if we just go to, to the, the answer to that was that you were going then to the reverse auctioning process, put that as a procedure that won't help Philadelphia-based companies?
Well, it may or may not help Philadelphia-based companies. So, you know, the, I just want to state again, you know, we did award, 68% of our total contracts award, awards, were awarded to local registered businesses in calendar year 2015.
In the city?
In the city, registered businesses. So, which, you know, that, is that 75% or 100%? No. But it is 68% of our total contract awards. So reverse auction, you know, we need to, we're going to take a phased approach about implementing reverse auctions. I think we need to do a good job at explaining to the businesses that are participating. The, they're committing to those prices, and they're participating in this reverse auction, and they're guaranteeing those prices under contract.
Understood.
And so I think, you know, your point of, could this be an unbalanced bid? Yes, it could be. You know, we did a pilot program a couple of years ago. We had one contract, and I don't know if it was a result of the reverse auction or if it was a result of the vendor that we had under contract, but, you know, essentially they were trying to squeeze out additional costs once they got the contract in place. So, you know, it was a service contract, and so something that used to take, you know, an hour to do, then took three hours to do. And so they had bid down, you know, their price, that it was unreasonable for them to sort of be under contract. And we ended up, you know, not renewing that contract and rebidding it out. And I think, you know, your point of, you know, is reverse auction, could it result in an unbalanced bid? Yes, I think it could. And I think we need to be, we need to do a good job of explaining to the vendors who are conducting, who are participating in that auction, like, "You are committing to these, to these prices, and this is what that means." Because we, the city doesn't want to get into a contract that doesn't work for the vendor, because then it's a contract that doesn't work for the city.
Understood. Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr., I'm actually working on some gun legislation. Look out.
Which legislation? Sorry?
Gun legislation.
Gun legislation? Okay.
So, I was going to ask you a couple of questions. What do you deem, I know you have to, under law, do lowest responsible bidder with respects to your procurement practice, what parameters do you believe are around the term responsible?
Um...
Because that's always, that's always a word that has intrigued me.
It's a very intriguing word. So, I mean, responsible, you know, can be defined a variety of different ways, and oftentimes, you know, that is defined in the bid, individual bid document, and that may be you have four years of experience operating in this business, you have, you know, 20 pieces of this set of equipment. So responsible or responsibility can mean a variety of items, and it depends from bid to bid what responsibility could mean.
Okay. So if there is, if we deem that you are not responsible, if you have not shown in your history of practices, whatever field you may be in, the willingness or the ability or a history of having the appropriate diversity within your workforce or other aspects of that, do you deem that to be potentially a part of the responsible bid requirement?
I think those are interesting questions, and I think, you know, that's, I think this is a question that we could look at and the law department could look at, because I think there are, you know, sort of state and federal laws that we have to comply with. And so long as we're not breaking any of those laws, then, you know, we absolutely could look at something like that.
Yeah, I mean, it's just, we, I mean, from our perspective, responsible, and I think all of us is, being responsible as it relates to giving opportunities to people, but I don't ever require, I mean, we talk about a series, like, we had an equal opportunity plan with respects to identifying your strategies of having a diverse workforce based on your contract. And I'm thinking that if, within that, I would think that if you comply or show that you have attempted to comply with the EOP plan, that would be deemed responsible. So can you kind of look at that from your perspective, from a procurement perspective? Because we really like to have that as a part of the process now that we've, now have the labor standards, the department will be the enforcement arm of all of these various EOPs that have been submitted.
Sure. Yeah, and I mean, I think, you know, whether we do it as part of responsibility or we do it on evaluating vendors who are under contract and whether they're, how we're rating them, and currently we don't really have a practice for rating vendors. And so, you know, part of an e-procurement system is, you know, giving the city the inability to say, "This vendor is really great, and here's why they're really great." And so that, that can come into play with responsibility.
Yeah, that's...
So absolutely.
So can you give us, just think about it?
Yeah.
Give us a sense of whether or not that's something, because, you know...
Sure.
Guns, it's actually a part of, so, there are certain things that we can't, can't do with respects to guns. I know we have this dispute with the state, and we'll probably, hopefully, at some point end up in court. As we, we're moving towards that process a few years back, that's before I was the council president, so I wasn't as responsible as I am now. I actually do all kind of crazy stuff. But the reality is that we had it teed up all the way up to, I think, the, one of the appellate courts, and I think the next step was actually the Supreme Court, but the entity, which was the NRA at the time, didn't have standing, so we didn't move forward. Anyways, long story. So with respects to our purchasing of weapons for the Philadelphia police, sheriffs, and all of the other entities that we procure weapons and ammunition for, as it relates to us having a quote-unquote responsible bidder, is that something that, and I kind of answered this already, if that was a part of that process, I'm assuming that the lowest responsible bidder?
Yes, yes. I mean, but when we talk about responsibility too, I mean, really, you're talking about qualifications of a vendor. And those qualifications are, you know, for something like guns and ammunition, you know, we look to the police department or the sheriff's department to help develop those specifications.
So, I mean, well, you know, yeah, the presidential candidate said another presidential candidate was not responsible, and he added all kind of other things. A person was in office, what, in politics for 30 years, senators, and I'm not trying to get political. So being qualified is based on your perspective. So if you have a retailer or wholesaler that sells ammunition, guns, and all of that, and they have had a history of irresponsible behavior in terms of who they sold the weapons to and who they sold ammunition to, and there's been documented instances, wouldn't you, couldn't you stress and say that person is not a responsible purveyor of weapons and ammunition?
I mean, if they've broken the law, yeah. I would agree with you that they would not be responsible.
Okay. And civil, criminal or civil? Or both?
Either, you know, probably, if they, you know, if the owner or the president of the company, you know, has, you know, some sort of legal history, and, you know, and it comes into play with the operations or the award of the bid, yes, that we could find them not responsible.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gill.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to follow up on the other question. So, you know, we were discussing a little bit about your department's efforts to expand opportunities, particularly in certain areas. So service supply and equipment, I think, and public works are other areas where procurement has a real need to try to expand. And could you be more specific about what measures you are looking at pursuing and what you think the analysis is on the obstacles in those particular areas?
Sure. So, I mean, obstacles, I think there are many obstacles, and some of them are related to process, some of them are related to infrastructure or systems that are obsolete or non-existent, and some of them are terms that are included in our contract, you know, something like, so we, by charter, we must charge a processing fee in order for bids to be processed through the procurement department. So we've reduced that, but we still have to charge a fee. And, you know, it's a service that we provide. I would rather not charge a fee, but by charter, we must charge a fee. So, you know, it's just, and then.
How much is that fee?
What, $25. But also bid security is something that's required by charter. So, you know, in order to bid with the City of Philadelphia Procurement Department, you have to pay a fee, not for the processing of the contract, but to bid, to submit for the bid. And for public works, that's a common practice. For service supplies and equipment, it's not a common practice, yet we must do it by charter. So, you know, all of these things, you know, really inhibit vendors from doing business because we're not, you know, having a current day practice of what's best models, what's the best model for contracting out there. So I think, you know, as part of the working groups that, you know, the chief administrative officer in procurement and the contracting unit is looking at are a lot of those things. You know, A, what are the charter requirements that we require? Are they mandated? You know, we belong to an association or an institute, for the National Institute for Governmental Purchasing, that really sort of lays out a lot of best practices. So it's sort of looking at ours and overlaying, you know, their requirements and saying, where are we different? Where are we the same? Where can we improve? So that's part of the practice or process that we're.
And specifically, what are you doing to address it?
So these working groups that the chief administrative officer, you know, they're actionable working groups. I mean, we're, we've already made some changes. I mean, in our public works area, we've, you know, we're looking at a project management approach about how we process, and we've reduced our processing time by 20%, 32 days, and really, you know, increasing that and creating efficiencies. So, I mean, and that came all, all came out of a lot of what we're looking at for these working groups. So I think there's going to be a whole set of recommendations. I mean, I think we have said in the past and will continue to say this, you know, we will present that to council. We have invited council representatives to, you know, sort of sit and participate in some of those, but we will report back, you know, our recommendations. We're also looking at, you know, getting feedback from vendors, because we don't want to make a decision, you know, and a whole set of decisions that aren't going to work for vendors. We want vendors to compete for our work.
So I guess the other area that I'm trying to understand a little bit better is, you know, 65% of our departments don't really make goals in terms of MWBE participation. So we only have about a third of them that actually do it. But if you were to even factor in the percentage or the amount of contracts that are considered exempt from that, it adds to that significantly. So, for example, the managing director's office has almost its entire budget, just a million out of $63 million is not exempt. You know, you've got departments like the Free Library where a million out of a two-and-a-half million dollar budget is exempt from the MWBE. And what I think OEO has documented is, is that over the years, for example, if you took the managing director's office, it's shown that over the years, the number of contracts that are exempt has actually started to go down. And so one of the questions is, is whether your department is looking very closely at the exemptions of these areas and whether they are truly exempt contracts, you know, because they're a sizable amount of money. Prisons is enormous, you know, and they, I'm assuming they relate back to these specific areas of service supplies and equipment.
Sure.
Could relate back to public works. But have you done an analysis and do you continue to do a rigorous rechecking of these exempted contracts about whether they ought to be truly exempt?
So, I mean, I can speak a little bit to this, but Angela Doud Burton may want to, you know, speak further. I mean, with regard to the exemptions, I mean, my understanding is that's looked at on at least an annual basis, if not, you know, more often than that, you know, biannual or quarterly. Every bid opportunity that we put out, the, you know, we, we have, you know, commodities and lists of commodities that, you know, OEO is constantly looking at every six months and saying, these areas, you know, we don't have a lot of registered businesses. So those are, you know, best in good faith efforts. These areas, we have a lot of businesses that are registered, you know, and we're going to put, you know, required participation rates on those. So that's being done as a part of practice, you know, all the time.
I mean, one of the things that came up yesterday was that Commissioner Epps from the Commerce Department said that he was not interested in expanding the registry, that the registry was not, the expansion of the registry was not a top priority. And if that's the case, that, you know, these are the businesses that are registered, particularly in departments like, you know, the ones that we struggle with, whether that's service supplies and equipment, and, you know, it's even disappointing to see, like, small order purchases when we talk about debundling to see whether that's going to help with it. African-Americans represent 2.5% of small order purchase contracts that are delivered, and it's just, you know, even when we debundle and make it possible for people to bid on small amounts, we're not seeing movement. And so, but if you're saying the registry is not showing availability, then aren't we, why are we not having a focus on expansion of the registry? Why did the Commerce Director close that conversation down?
Thank you very much for the question, Councilwoman. Angela Doud Burton, Executive Director for the Office of Economic Opportunity. There were a couple of things that I think the Commerce Director was responding to. Initially, the administration set a goal of 50% expansion of the OEO registry. Over the last six years, we've grown the registry by 82%. A third of it is represented by companies located within the City of Philadelphia Zip Code 191. Another third is in the 11-county metropolitans, the fiscal area, and the rest is in New Jersey, New York, Delaware, et cetera. His focus is on helping to build the companies that are located locally. And so he wasn't saying so much, don't expand the registry, it's not going to be a top priority to expand it by 50%. But there is a priority that we have in terms of looking at opportunities for new markets and business development for minorities and women who want to get into the market and do business with the city and other institutions around this region. The exempt contracts that you find in the annual report, and they're listed in detail here, include $62 million. That's an electric bill that the managing director's office pays for. But it also includes things like helicopters and sludge barge rental facilities, software that's proprietary that minorities or women do not have the keys to. And so these are areas where we have identified as few or no opportunity for minorities and women to participate. We will constantly enter the market, and through our disparity studies, through our benchmarking initiatives with our states and cities, we go out to them and say, we've got a contract worth $20 million for water treatment chemicals. Who do you buy yours from? Are any of them minorities and women? And does it make sense to include those kinds of dollars when we're trying to evaluate the productivity and the performance of a department where we have few or no minorities to actually participate in the process? So we'll continue to work to get them into the process, but until we can do that, we have identified them as exempt and we publicize them.
Yeah, and, you know, I'll conclude, but I think part of the issue is that I don't think that there's any question about the interest in growing local businesses and the MWBE. I guess I'm questioning because some of your data indicates that particularly, I think it was the managing director's office, I'll relook at that, but showed declining levels of exempt contracts over time. So clearly, this is not a fixed position. It's not, it's not always the case. And what I would like to know is making sure that we have a rigorous attention to it and an analysis of the market that is continuing and ongoing, and also clearly that we're expanding efforts to really look for diverse communities in these particular areas where we have difficulty. We also know that clearly on some areas, like maybe Asian-Americans in particular, and to some extent Hispanics in certain areas, we're not, we're maybe approximating utilization, but we're not hitting availability. So we know that we have a gap there. We have a learning gap and an understanding gap. And, you know, I think that that's an important thing for us to try and figure that out because we're not making enough advances, clearly. I mean, it is so depressing to see, like, 2.5% African-Americans on small order purchases of $32,000 when a lot of people feel like it's been an effort to debundle.
I really want to check that number with you.
Okay.
There are transactions that are less than $32,000. There's over $1.5 million, and I think African-Americans do have a slightly higher, and I will verify that number for you, but I think it's a little higher than the 2% that you're referring to.
Councilwoman, thank you.
Thank you.
We remind our, my friends and colleagues, we still have two departments left. All right, thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Toddler-Burger.
Thank you, Council President. Long ago, in 1983, 84, I worked here for City Councilwoman Joan Kuduski, and it was the time of the Philadelphia subway contract. I'm not sure if the rules still apply, but I do have a question at the end of it, but it's still a very important story because it affected our city deeply. I believe it's still the practice that the actual subway cars, even though run by SEPTA, are actually property of the City of Philadelphia. That's how it was then. I'm not sure if it still is. It's not even my question. But Bud Company was one of two remaining railcar companies in the United States at the time. The other one was in Buffalo, New York. And the other bidder, the bidder on this was from Kawasaki, who ultimately won that bid because, as defined earlier by Council President, you know, they were the lowest responsible bid. I'm still kind of foggy on all that. Since that time, Bud Company closed up, I think, a result of losing that. I couldn't say that's the only thing, but they closed up. Today, there is an abandoned golf course that brings no revenue to the City of Philadelphia other than real estate tax, and nobody works there, and at one time, there probably was near 1,000 people that worked there. If that process were to go on today, what advantages would the Bud Company have over a company in Kawasaki, Japan, if the bidding process were held today?
And where was the Bud Company located?
Bud Company was located in northeast Philadelphia, Red Lion Road.
Okay. So there's a preference in place for local businesses, and again, I'm talking about, you know, city-led bids, so I don't know if SEPTA has the same rules.
No, no, but, no, no. I was here at that, at that time, the City of Philadelphia bought those railcars.
Okay.
They were not, they are not property of SEPTA. And I don't think to this day they're property of SEPTA.
Okay. So, you know, if they're led by, if the City of Philadelphia let a bid, there's a 5% preference for any bids over $1 million and a 10% preference for any bid under $1 million. And that's the preference that they would receive.
Okay. I thank you on that. One note of clarification, you had mentioned that 68% of bids were won by Philadelphia companies. A dollar amount, or is that the actual bidder?
That's a dollar amount.
As a dollar amount. So do you ever have that statistic broken down on actual bidders from Philadelphia? Vendors that come from the city?
We can, we can work on that for you.
I would like to see that. I think that would be good to share with the council, the whole. Mr. President, I am finished. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilwoman, did you, we have two more departments left.
I have just a data request.
All right. Good.
I was wondering if your department could share its language access plans and procedures for outreach? I think it's great that you're doing, making some effort at doing expanded outreach. I think that was in your testimony, but it would be helpful to know what your plans are for language access, bilingual staffing, and whether your department's been fully trained on language line and outreach, and whether contracts and bidding and information that goes out is done in multiple languages as well.
Okay. We'll report that back to you.
Thank you.
All right. Oh, thank you, Councilwoman. I have no more questions. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you.